All right, it is now five thirty. We are now in session, Mayor, City of Brownsville, Board of Alderman, City of Brownsville, and our always twelve meets. Uh, we're now in session. Uh, we do have a call on President, so the first thing we want to do is the invitation. I've been praying every, uh, month, so this month, uh, we're going to start rotating again. So all the people who just voted for the invitation.
Yes, everybody. Everybody, Father, we come before this, um, as we know how big, uh, you know, we actually look down upon the city of Brownsville, you know, they got, and look down upon us today. Help us make the right decision with the city of Brownsville today, because, thank God, we'd like you to just look down upon our nation today, you know, look down on our county and our city, and all our leaders of the city and county, you know. We actually blessed, you know, bless this meeting, because let no confusion come into this meeting, you know, let us think together and come with one mind and one decision, you know, what's best for our city, you know. We pray these may bless us in your son Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Let me stand for a quick. I pray that the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation by God, in the physical, the living, the dead, and the rest of the world. Thank you. Everybody has got the minutes. We want to make sure that at this particular time, we open up for public comments. We had this research, uh, just please, and other entities and other, um, entities, they put the public comments at the top of their agenda. Make sure the agenda is available to everyone. So at this time today, the public comments on tonight's two minutes, please. Please stand and state your name in the comments on tonight's agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm coming right to the public comments. All right, before we jump to the public comments, I'm just looking at noise. All right, we're, we're going to approve the minutes for our regular meeting July eighth. We're going to vote Mayor and Board of Aldman. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No, there's two approvals, right?
Uh, do I hear a second? All right, are there any questions, corrections? Here and now, we call for both of them, President, let them know outside of our, those both may. That's what happened to take glass off. All right, public comments. Now we have the public comments part of our agenda for tonight. Are there any public comments, uh, from, uh, in what it orders on tonight's agenda, two minutes, please? Here and now, we move to our orders. Uh, first, orders number ten forty-one, court costs increase. On the second week, we just did, um, pass the first reading. We did, um, I think, uh, attorney base. The, there was some more, uh, cost, some questions about what the increased cost would be for the court. Uh, not just from what the, there be defined would be or court cost, but actually the increase of the cost of what the business for the court. So we now have a second reading, or this could be number ten forty-one on the second reading. Uh, at this time, I like to pay a motion on ten forty-one. Motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Now, we do now have discussion, but also what we have to do too is open up a public hearing because it's on the second reading. Now we have the motion on the floor. Uh, at this time, we called out, we're going to further discussion. Uh, are there any public comments, or, or we're now in a public session on reading number two for orders number ten forty-one? Okay. Here and now, we're closing back out and go back to, we have a motion on the floor. Now, we'll open discussion on the, uh, second reading. Uh, I think Attorney Base, you said there, there were some questions on the first reading about the cost increase. Uh, stay as little as two dollars, plus there's some more cost increase you were explaining to me.
Yeah, well, so I was talking to Judge Abelwood, um, a few days ago. We're, we're talking about this a little bit, but, um, some other things, but he, he was telling me about some other, um, I call him, I don't know if it's handbags, basically, that the state charges down, that, um, are, are going to end up coming out of court costs. Uh, and I, I don't, I don't remember or don't know the, the total amount. It's not like super substantial, but it certainly starts eating into the, into the, um, into the, into our portion of the, the court cost, so I'm just going to give you all an update on that.
Okay. Also, the, the question was raised, uh, by Bishop about with the software cost of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, cost of the software to process the, the tickets for the court. All right, so this time, so now we have discussion. We have a motion of the second on the second reading.
Yep, that's true. So, so Ms. Batzer told me the other day, um, that the, uh, and I voted no against it because we really couldn't substantiate, but other than a dollar that was going to go to the city, and we were raising it a hundred and fifty dollar.
Two hundred, the only raise of twenty five.
Yeah, twenty five. But she told me that the grant had currently been paying for the software, and the grant's going to be up, and we're going to have to assume the cost to the software. So this increase would, uh, would help cover that cost.
Along with the state increase.
Yep.
All right, at this time, we, I, are there any further discussion? The question to you now, we're calling for the vote. Um, we, we did a roll call vote, we have to use the king. All right, all the people. Still voting, no. All the bishop?
Yes.
All the flag?
Yes.
All the intent?
Yes.
Okay. All right, there we go. So on the second reading, uh, the best. All right, so now we have design, you got orders number ten forty-two on the first reading. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. This is simply an honest to, uh, basically, uh, s- simplify our provide a little bit more variety as far as what building materials can be utilized. And also to, to make sure that there's on and on, it's also referencing the Inner Design Review Guidelines. I think the city endorsed back in two thousand and twenty-two. And so this is just, uh, some of the nuts and bolts, uh, quite quickly, is allowing in, in areas that have existing structures that are predominant, uh, uh, built with, or utilizes vinyl siding. That high quality vinyl siding can be used in a hundred percent of all the building, uh, uh, walls. But, and it also reduces the current requirement from a hundred percent of brick stone and the cauter stone and cast stone down to twenty-five percent on each exterior wall, as opposed to being a hundred percent on each wall down. And also, the, the, uh, it also allows for another building material to be utilized, which is cement board, uh, which is a popular material out there now. So we do allow for vinyl siding. Uh, we do allow for, uh, the, the rest of those, uh, particular, uh, materials. And we're just reducing it down from a hundred percent down to twenty-five percent. Uh, we want to make it a little bit more friendly, uh, for contracts. Also, we're just adapting, uh, that, making sure we're adapting needs by reference in its own. So that's basically essentially what's going on.
Okay, this did receive a favorable. This did receive a favorable review from the planning commission. Um, okay, this is orders number ten forty-two, man, on the first reading. I think a lot of research has been done on this.
Yes.
Um, y'all can work on this for quite some time.
Yeah.
Okay, it is time I like entertain motion on orders number ten forty-two.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We move on to the second, all right, uh, discussion, the questions concerned with Mr. Mayor. Okay. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all so much. Just, just to make it a little bit easier.
All right, so now we're calling for the vote. All votes in favor, let it know by the sign of the bar. Those both may. All right, now we, uh, we did have last minute of, so, I remember it's an, uh, agenda. We sent, we sent out to Aldman, I think everybody got the updated one. A resolution number ten ninety-two, it's a paving bid that we need to accept. Uh, we did pay, did send out a, pop a note in the paper. There were some streets that were required to be public works, we recommended these streets be done. We gave, we set us a budget so that they could do as many streets as possible for every passion. And then we've got these, these streets that came in Monroe, North Monroe, Key Corn. All kind of adjacent to each other, lowest bid proposed was filed a paving company for a hundred thirty-eight thousand, uh, forty-eight dollars. So at this time, um, I'd like to entertain motion to accept the bid for the paving project, presentable to take out here too.
Don't miss.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
They've been moving on to the second, all the questions concerned.
Good, just, and you may not know that, is it, do you know how much of that is on Key Corn?
I'm not exactly sure, the specs went out from eight to eight, or, you know. This is just beginning to just part of a small part of this, of course, we're going to continue to do more projects. I'm betting we have Anderson, so this is a grant funded, we also continue to do, uh, put them on a set aside and I'm going to accept it. Okay. Any other questions to discuss? Here and now, we call for the vote. All the people that know by the sign of the bar. Those both may. All right, so. Um, item number eight. Jurisdiction exception from the city of Brownsville, which is the county commissioner's request, um, on the ambulance authority. Will their transport inmates, I mean, from the jail, uh, by the Haven County Ambulance Board versus of the Lexington Ambulance Board. So, Attorney Base, I think, I tried to leave this sent that to you and my sir.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the sheriff's department of the jail specifically asked for what they call a jurisdictional, jurisdictional exception. So that the county ambulances can transport the, uh, any inmates that need medical attention, um, by county ambulance. And, and so since the city has its own ambulance jurisdiction now, they, they've got to request that in order for us to allow any, any, anybody other than the, um, hospital ambulance service to, to operate within the city of Brownsville. The, the, the sheriff's logic behind it was that, um, it would save them money, uh, since the county essentially doesn't build the, the jail for those pickups. I, I think it was only maybe eight or nine last year calls to the jail, you know, for ambulance. Um, and, and this, to me, it's, it's not really that, that big of a deal. I'm, you know, perfectly happy with the, the city doing it, uh, or granting this jurisdictional, jurisdictional exception, um, to the county. And, and, you know, the other thing is, is when we transport or anybody transports an inmate in that, in the ambulance, you've got to have security or a guard with you, so it's really kind of a headache.
Okay, this is the request that the county commissioners have. This will save the money, it's also for, for goodwill in terms of our cooperation, to make sure citizens, everybody gets the most coverage possible.
So, Mayor, if you'll entertain a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion that we make a jurisdictional exception from the city for the, uh, county jail.
All right, I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We move to the second, all right, now there are questions and discussions, you know, more information, you're pretty cut and dry. Okay. Here and now, we're calling for all the people that know by the sign of the bar. All right, those are both may. Um. Action, item more, more presentation, or let's move forward. Creation of the Health, Education, Housing Board. This is the question that's come up for, um, our, our city council about how we continue to put tools in our toolbox and make, move forward, uh, for development for health, education, housing. So this is just another opportunity that, um, I think Aaron and Barney have been working on, uh, trying to see how this fits and how it works with it, so, uh, this is Barney's, both terms.
Mayor, all the, thank you, um. Just to give you a little bit of background on, on how this came to be, because what's in your packet is just a lot of bullet points that talk about how good it is and this, that and the other, and there are many, many great things about it, but, uh, ever since Aaron has come on with the IDB, uh, we've, we've been doing a lot of good housekeeping. Uh, I've served as treasurer for the organization for probably eight years or so, so I was really, I guess, adamant about every eye being crossed, every eye being dotted and t crossed. So a lot of housekeeping, and that led us to a firm in Nashville, Bradley Aaron, who were kind of the preeminent pilot writers, TIF writers, I mean, this is what they do for entities all over Tennessee. And, uh, so they've been making sure all our pilots meet the muster, they're analyzed right, everything's documented right. And just in a kind of a flippant thing, Tom Trent, who's the principal there, asked Aaron, said, y'all ought to look into a housing, education, health, education, and housing board. And Aaron's like, what's that? Mouthful. What it is, it, it's, it's a, it's similar to an IDB, but its specific, uh, intent is to go after things that are associated with health, be it retirement centers, assisted living, um, clinics, education, most particularly post-secondary education. Uh, vocational schools, uh, community colleges, things like that. And then there's the housing component. So the housing component, both IDB and the Health Ed Housing Board can do. The housing board has a little bit more, I guess, um, policymaking, uh, ability in it into making sure that, that certain housing elements, the developer comes in, for example, and says, you know, I want to do this, 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 and our planning board and some of the other boards that, that serve under the purview of the city say, well, this looks like you're fixing to crush a bunch of votes out, or this is going to do this or that. This board has the ability to put policies in place that kind of force that developer to do what I call, and this is some stuff that I've been working on, but you have a mixed income. We, we've talked a lot about mixed use, that one, Michelle's like.
Yes, sir.
But you have developments that are considered mixed income. So that, and, and they're examples of these things, Harbor Town being one of them. So we've got a lot of good information from both Lenny Ricks and Kiss, who've done our land use plan, the Turleys, who's done Harbor Town, Tom Trent with Bradley Aaron. But basically, the state gives us the opportunity to use this tool. It's a state piece of legislation, and my request to y'all is, will y'all let us venture down the road to create that entity? And by creation, meaning it is a nonprofit organization, just like the statute says, it has to have bylaws, it has to have a corporate charter, so on and so forth, and in, in talking, and I guess this will be something that comes up at the IDB tomorrow, uh, we believe that it's such a powerful tool, we believe that Stanton should also be afforded the opportunity to create this board. And I say, how would we afford the opportunity, because we've, the IDB will most likely fund the legal fees necessary to create those boards. And that's it in a nutshell. I can give you a couple of examples of how this would work, if you're wondering, okay, this, let's say this works, but it plays, how, how does it look? Or I can just field questions, so. Whatever y'all's preference.
How it would work.
How would it work? Glad you asked, I'm glad, um, a perfect example of this, and, and I was, uh, this was back when Lena was here, but I guess it was last summer, uh, when Darsburg State really had a heart, I mean, they wanted to, to come here badly, but there, there were no funds set aside by the Board of Regents to necessarily renovate a building for a campus, build a campus, or anything of that nature. Now, we didn't go down the road far enough to say, oh, they're, but they're lease dollars, so, so I'm not trying to mislead you in this. But a perfect example would be if a, if a regional community college wanted to open a satellite campus, this Health Housing and Education Board would then in turn create the deal to acquire CED property, renovate it, bring it up to date, create the campus, arrange the lease payment where the Board of Regents pays the lease payment back to this, uh, entity, and you've got a satellite campus in your community now. And it didn't cause the taxpayer a dime, and it didn't put the city on the hook a dime. Another example would be, uh, and I think we'll all agree that we have an aging population. Um, we have one, we have one assisted living facility in town and one nursing home. Um, I don't know about y'all, but that ain't, competition's always good, right? It pushes people to go higher and higher and higher. And I'm not saying anything negative about either one of the places, but I know if you're the only game in town, you can pretty well do whatever you want to. Uh, a situation that could, could arise is we could have another assisted living or another convalescent care home come in and say, we want to put a facility here in your community, but we want some incentives. We may decide to issue a pilot. Maybe that's all it is. We may decide to go, okay, you know what, we're going to structure this deal where we'll create an incentive for you, we will loan you the money to build your facility. Again, the payments are paid back to the Health Ed Board. No cost to the taxpayer, no risk to the taxpayer or the city, and you've got another assisted living or convalescent care. It's, it's all about the needs of the citizens, how do you grow your community economically? And the end result is how do you create a larger tax base? Because inflation don't go the other way. It's going up, up, up. And we've got to figure out how to be more innovative in our tax base versus mentioning the word, we're just going to tax our citizens more. Um, Aaron, you're welcome to, I mean, he's, he's more the brains behind this, and you wonder, well, why am I? I don't know why I'm, I'm the one doing the talking, other than, uh, I've been involved with a lot of junk a whole bunch of years, um, helped with the land use plan, served as secretary of the Planning Commission. Uh, it's just, I'm so engaged in every single part of this. In my mind, it, it makes sense, it's like a spider's web, and I've got it all webbed up there. But I don't mean to not, I mean, he's the expert, so I'll shut up for a minute.
Yeah, first off, let me ask you, just after what Joe has, has talked about, and again, thank you for letting me be here and speak to you tonight as well. Um, before I say anything, what questions might y'all have right off the bat before I say anything else?
Well, glad you asked. So, so I'm concerned with obviously, well, let, let me just say this, I mean, let me say a couple of things. First of all, I'm excited that, that we're looking forward to making this, you know, a clear-cut process. Uh, but I'm concerned about, you know, the role of the chamber, the role of IDB, role, you know, the, the city as the mayor, if it's been recruiting industry in Brownsville for years and years, you know, along with the Industrial Development Board. Just seeing how this piece of the puzzle would fit in without, um, you know, and complement more, more or less, instead of duplicating a lot of efforts. And, and I would really love to hear, uh, some best practices or something, you know, and, and some people that have adopted this, uh, that have really had some, you know, where it's made a difference in their community. You don't rather just be in another board, uh, you know, and, just quite frankly, I mean, we have a hard time filling most of our boards now, uh, you know, not to, not to take any weight, you know, anything away from that, because, because I'm, I would definitely be in support of, uh, some better way of doing business and a better way to entice people to come to the city of Brownsville, but I'd just like to hear a little bit more about it.
Yeah, uh, we would be happy to. First off, y'all get the discretion at this, we're just simply saying, hey, through the course of doing business, this is a tool that got uncovered, that looking around other places, all the bigger towns in Tennessee had them. Uh, several of the suburbs, Gallatin, just outside of Nashville specifically, I know they have one. Um, but go back to your first question about complement versus duplicate, and I really like and appreciate how you worded that, uh, because that's pretty insightful. Um, think of one of these boards as almost like a half-brother to an IDB. That's really kind of what it looks like in function. Under state law, as it exists, IDBs can only go so far. It's not that far into the areas of healthcare, housing, and, and education, while they're charged to helping affect outcomes to that. A lot of the tools, the financial tools, the legislature really didn't give a whole lot of power with bonds or pilots in those three areas. But by creating the Health Ed, Health Ed and Housing Boards, they've got much more latitude, so it's not in competition. And it's not, uh, uh, duplicating what's already there. It truly is complementary. It, it's kind of like having a flathead screwdriver and a Phillips head, both. I mean, yes, they're both screwdrivers, but they have two different functions, right? Um, so I, I want to clearly state that. The other part is, if this board chooses to create a Health Ed and Housing Board, which again is your prerogative, um, when it's set up, you get to form it however you want. Within the bounds of state law, obviously, but, but you get to form it and its powers and such under state law. So you also can limit duplication that way, you have oversight over the board. Uh, but then it can also work hand in hand with your planning and zoning. It can work hand in hand with the future land use plan that this community spent, well, the better part of two years, uh, putting into place, so that it does act and complement in practice as well, not just as being set up as, as an entity, but in actual day-to-day practice, you want it, you need it, and I'll just tell you from my standpoint, I need it to be complementary. Because again, at the IDB, even though we all, most people agree more healthcare opportunities, educational opportunities, and housing opportunities are a good thing, you need to figure out how to, to make it conducive, to get the developer to come in and then help their math pencil out. Now, if there's a creative mechanism, if there's a tool that communities in Tennessee can avail themselves of, why not put it in your arsenal? You get to decide when and how it's used as, as you form it. But why not take advantage of the tool, just to give yourself the chance? That's, it's kind of, as, as I started learning more about this over the last couple of months, I could see as we're trying to grow with what's happening just fourteen miles away, even though they did say mass production, be very clear about this, they didn't say production, they said mass production in twenty-eight, some production will begin in twenty-seven like they anticipated. But it's coming, that's, we're down to twenty-four months.
And to add to that, another, um, example that crossed my mind is public-private, uh, partnerships and this, and most of you are familiar with the Lift in that, in, uh, Jackson, that whole area down in there. That's a public-private partnership. Now, it was primarily created through, uh, Community Redevelopment Association. And we looked into that a year ago. Legislation was such that we were going to have to have an amendment to add our, uh, city and county into that legislation. Time ran out, the, they were recessed, and so we never got that done, but a project like that could never come to fruition if you did not have an entity or a group like this, because again, uh, the IDB has, goes to a certain point, but I don't think the IDB can put in something like the Lift, which is a wellness center. So then, then that bears the question, well, then how do you do it? Or do, do you just not, or do you put the tool in the box to say, well, if that does come up? And I hope we do grow to a point where we have something like that. At least we'll have the ability to incentivize it and put, put it together. So really, the question is, can we, do we have permission to begin to put the framework together? Doesn't necessarily mean we're going to execute anything. It's just, we're, we're building the framework so that if we do need it, it's there, we can use it, and that's it.
You know, but what I, what I don't want is I don't want another layer or another entity in our system, you know, the planning board, building inspector, you know, whatever zoning law, I, I don't want anybody else to say no. I want somebody to say, yes. And I want somebody, you know, trying to figure out how to make it work and make a recommendation and be that kind of it to make it work.
That, that's, that's very fair and completely understand why, why you would want that. I would too, if I'm sitting in any one of your chairs tonight for the, just for the record. The, the thing about this is it's not a board of approval. It's, it's a board of finance, really, to, to help finance and, and to make, uh, the, the math pencil out on developments related to healthcare, education, and housing. It is not there to say, yes, this will be in the community, or no, it's not, we don't like it. A company's got to work through all that. This doesn't make a bad deal good, it makes a good deal better. I want to be very clear about that. And the other thing is, I, it's just me, I think you could argue you might be able to attract a better developer when using some of the financial tools, because if you're trying to sell bonds right to back a project, if I'm an investor, I'm not going to buy a, a bond from, you know, for a project where somebody's never done this before, or they're not well capitalized on their own. It's only going to be those projects where you've got a developer who has the, the practical and financial wherewithal that knows what they're doing and has done it before, that would entice a bondholder to want to go buy the bond in the first place. And about the bonds, they are non-recourse, meaning that in a worst-case scenario, if the project fails, if it goes bankrupt, call it whatever you want, as a non-recourse bond, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, Michael can fact-check me, but on non-recourse bonds, I think on the face of the bond, it clearly states as a matter of law, it is non-recourse. Um, the, the project just simply fails, the city, the taxpayer is not on the hook per state law. And that's, that's important. But, but to help alleviate that, the bonds are tax exempt. And so it does help entice that an investor to come in and buy it anyway, even though it is non-recourse.
Of course, I know the word bond puts fear in your veins, but the IDB is sitting in the same position. IDB sets on authority to issue bonds that are non-recourse, that's right, today. Uh, just like we treat every pilot, i- it's not a, just a lackadaisical approach, oh, we think we're just going to cut this dude a deal, you know, it is a lot of, uh, stuff through the controller of the treasury, we have to really document and make sure a deal is viable. And, and once we establish that, hey, this looks like a viable deal, then it goes on a chain for approval. But, you know, as you can see now, I mean, IDB's been in existence since the sixties. Uh, it's never issued a bond, so I'm not saying that that's the first thing you're going to do is go out and do that. What I'm saying is, it gives us, it gives us the ability to do something that I think, um, that we have not had the ability or the tool to do.
Well, with the housing increase and the rent around here is ridiculously high, how does it affect the low-income house that we got on the section C?
Well, one of the things that, that this thing can do, because let's just roughface it. The housing we got going on right now are either a fixed rent or, uh, supplemented rent. Those big apartment complexes that we've seen, and yes, people need that. But the developers that I've been speaking with, the, the, the people who are so outside-of-the-box thinkers have found ways to put attainable housing in any given development. And, and the way they do that is through some of these things, uh, these instruments like with this bond issue. Part of the restriction could be for that developer, you know what? You've got to, you've got to put X number of this price range house in your mixed-use development, but you don't get to come in. It's just, just that simple. You start holding people's feet to the fire and it, it turns out, you know, people think, oh, when you do something like that, that's too much government overreach. I can take you to plenty different walkable communities that are mixed-use, that have mixed income living in them, and you walk through there and the product is amazing and quality of life is amazing. And that's what, what, what we want to, we don't want to make it where people that are in, in the unfortunate situation to have to live in a fixed rent situation. We're trying to figure out a way to help them step up out of that. And then another thing too is, uh, the term gentrification is used quite frequently. Those are other policies you can put in place. There's some other interesting tools that you can implement. For example, if you go into an area and you're going to develop it and you have people whose, whose homes perhaps are not of the same value that this new development is going to generate, you can issue pilots to those homeowners, giving them a fixed or a reduced tax rate while the property appreciates over time, that homeowner gets to reap the benefit versus getting forced out. So that there are a lot of ways of thoughtful policymaking that generally in the IDB that we've thought about and, and, you know, and we think about industry, industrial development board, you know, this, we think about industry. You got to think about everything, every component, the ed part, the wellness part. Is the housing fair? You know, is it equitable? Are really, are we really doing everything we can to make sure that there can be homeownership? Or are we just giving it word of service? So yeah, I mean, and now we'll say this, it's only, as effective as the board you appoint. And I, I agree with Paul and Bishop, we, we already, you know, I've slimmed on the pickings, but.
We've boarded up, but, uh, so I see that no, no director, uh, can be an employee of the city or municipality. So would it, and sometimes these things overlap a little bit because you get people in the community that want to participate, you know, and they're members of a lot of different boards. Would, would, what about the IDB? Could, could, could they serve on the IDB and this board? Or would that be a kind of their itself?
I would think, Michael, you're correct, but the IDB isn't appointed by municipality and county. Just, now this board would be appointed solely from the municipality. But an appointment, I don't think constitutes, uh, to be an employee or an elected.
Right. Yeah. No, you're right. So you, you could serve, if you're on IDB, you could also serve on, on, on this board. Um, probably not a great idea, but you, you could. It's just you can't have, you can't have so, an, an employee of the city that could be influenced by the mayor or the city board, you know. It, it, it could affect their decision-making ability on that housing education board.
And I just have one more question and we'll let it go. But the, the, so the IDB funding process, so where is the county right now in that, in that funding process? So for instance, we, we would be using the city or this entity, the board that we appoint would be using money provided coming from the IDB, which is taxpayer dollars, by the way, which is from state or federal or whatever, it's all taxpayer dollars. Um, no, no additional tax to the city of Brownsville, I see what you're saying. But I mean, you know, within that, if taxpayers in the city of Brownsville, which is paying state taxes and, you know, remember that, but. So, uh, what, what kind of approvals? Would it just be the IDB board approval to fund this board?
Well, I want, I want to make sure we're, we're talking about the right end here. What, 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 what Joe mentioned earlier was perhaps the IDB helped reimburse setup costs should Brownsville or Stanton want to set up one of these boards. I don't know that you have to have an employee of that board that requires ongoing support. I mean, I, I.
You know, I was referencing strictly the fees associated with creating a, a nonprofit corporation. After that, there is no, the funding mechanism after that goes based on project. So if you get a, uh, facility, entity coming in and you got a, you know, I don't know, 30, 40, 50 million capex, the fees associated with what Eric has to do or any other staff member has to do would be, uh, borne by that entity.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, there would not be an ongoing cost associated.
Okay. So IDB wouldn't fund, wouldn't fund any of those fees or partner with any of those fees with that?
Uh, I would not see that being, being the case. That, I can't say there may not be some weird circumstances. I, I, I want to protect myself, but I, I can't imagine a scenario where there requires in fact a ongoing.
But the concept of them to, to fund the setup falls well within what our, what our objectives are as an industrial development board and, and, and as it's grown into basically an economic development corporation. You know, helping Stanton get one set up, helping the city of Brownsville get one set up is, is well within the bounds of what that board can do and should do. Rather than, you know, again, nickel and dime in every municipality around and try to get one set up.
You guys have any other questions?
Yeah, we've turned on the fourth floor. It's more than enough of your time.
Good job.
All right. So you've heard what, that we have the opportunity for this tool to move out and have a move forward from here. Um, I guess what we need to do is make sure you come back with more information, how, how we set it up and not if we have it out there, uh, I'm sure there are more questions in terms of how we, we move forward with, uh, creating this board.
So is your, uh, so the lady coming down to do the TIF stuff tomorrow, does she, does she kind of resident expert on this and seen the inner workings of these boards and know how they work?
Uh, actually, yes. Um, they, this particular person who's the attorney coming in tomorrow and this particular firm, they, in addition to helping set up industrial development boards, um, across the state, they've also helped set up health ed and housing boards as well all across the state. So any of you who may be planning to come to the tax increment financing training tomorrow that the IDB is hoping at 11:30, if you'd like to just stick around for a little bit. If you want to ask a question of Madison about these particular boards, uh, I, I think she would be fine. Making sure that she gets her questions answered. I think that'd be a good opportunity.
Also, I'll say this, any opportunity we have to make sure we have affordable housing, uh, quality developments in our community, we need to, they take a look at it. Um, more information, best practices, because there's some good questions we're asking tonight. So we, I think we have opportunity to move forward, uh, and look forward to doing so.
So, any motion or anything on this? Not, you know, sorry, what would it be?
Yeah. Is that your expectations?
Well, I guess my expectation is make sure y'all are aware of what's going on and let us go back. Uh, if that's fine, get the necessary, you know, we don't need to pull the trigger with her and an attorney until y'all say yes, but we can certainly come back prepared. But I didn't want to go out here and throw articles and corporations in front of you and say, oh, you need to know exactly how this is, is going. But, but yeah, the, the permission to move forward, uh, in getting those necessary documents ready to pull the trigger on, yeah. That's, that's the question. You can still. Yeah. All you've done is give me permission. You haven't approved the creation yet.
Permission to pursue.
Okay. Are everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah. So, so I'll make a motion, um, for permission for, uh, IDB, Aaron Stewart, Joe Ward to, to move forward with pursuing us, uh, possibly getting this, uh, getting this board sanctioned by the city of Brownsville.
Okay. And we'll hold on a second. All right. Any other questions concerned? Are you in a mobile call for vote off? Everybody know by sign of eye. Those are the poll name. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a robot permit for the homecoming parade, ensuring that it's included. It's a stand homecoming brand, only people that are here representing the school, but that's fine. Um, the homecoming parade is on 26th of September, um, and starts at 1:30, then at 3 o'clock. Um, Allison Byron is the contact information, just typically interviewed, presented properties within for the homecoming parade. All right. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the robot permit for the homecoming parade. Go ahead, more.
The motion.
Go ahead, sir. I'm sick. Any questions concerning? You know, call the board, everybody know by sign of eye. The poll's in it. Uh, community development report.
Do we have any questions, uh, regarding the community development report? We do have a D and opening for Anderson Avenue finally scheduled for August 26th at 2 o'clock here at the city hall. Uh, regarding the multimodal, we did receive a couple of more signatures. Uh, one was supposed to come back today and someone else reached out to me today as well. And those were two of the offsite that we were having trouble getting in contact with. And.
Okay. Any questions? I know the person. Okay. All right. The financial management, this is the bachelor's out this week. She did provide for our financial management report. Are there any questions concerned from the, on financial management? Okay. Here and now, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve financial management report. Very much. Motion. Go ahead, sir. We move on to the second. Any other questions concerned? Okay. You know, we're comfortable off the paper, they know by sign of eye. Those are the poll name. Okay. Uh, very briefly, the mayor's report, uh, I know Ms. Flash is going to talk more about this, but Back School Bash was awesome. Uh, it was a huge success. Uh, thank you to everybody here. Uh, everybody came out. It was a huge, big deal. So Bill, Chris, Phil, uh, the weather permitted to force to be able to carry away those backpacks and, and more of a community that not a lot of speakers, just quick comments and thank yous, and it was really successful. Thank this flag for, uh, bringing us all together. So we get, got a chance to do a Back School Bash. Um, the Brownsville EMS off of it, uh, we had a huge turnout there, uh, all, all the paramedics and, and teas are on board and, and, you know, they were all out and all seemed to step out on the facility grounds, uh, early that morning and, and it's, it's, it's moving on in a really good way. So we, we're happy to, we have opportunity to thank you. Um, and then the first lady Maria Lee, she came to this, Star came to take your pictures, but that was a really good event and square me. Uh, that was just a couple of just community-based events if I had that chance, the opportunity to jet in. Um, now, uh, I'm. I'm a people, I mean, I have anything. I'm revising.
Well, I, I just want to say out there, um, few rough months, it sure is good to see man Sanders. You know, Teddy Walsh and Chris Mountain back there sitting all three of them together there. They're still friends, they're fucking cool, they are.
So I remember this. All right. All of them, Flash.
Good evening. I don't really know what to say about, about the school bash. I mean, I was overwhelmed myself because it was, to me, it was really a success. And I would just like to thank the people for supporting me. I asked for a hundred items and most of the people that asked gave me two hundred items. But after studying seven hundred bags, we still had a lot of items, items left that I can use for next year. So I mean, the items that y'all gave for the children and the parents enjoyed them, but, uh, what they had on their faces smiling. There were three of the death of it and I was too. So, but I just really appreciate from the depths of my heart that you all supported me through the years. And, and one more thing coming up. We have some flyers up here. You're out. We're having national night out on September 16th. Don't y'all feel something, feel a bit something. You sat school like you did at the college here, but back to school base. We're not asking for any money, no donations, anything. We just want you to come and set up your tables and give handouts to the children and parents and fellowship and have a good time. Well, I can't do, I do it, but I can't do it without y'all. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of work and I don't, I enjoy it. And I guess I do because I continue doing it, because in October I'll have lunch in front of the survivors. Even though we don't have related life anymore, I still think they deserve a pat on the back. So you all, now I may be asking for something then though, but only that, but, but y'all, just appreciate y'all, you know, supporting me and it means, it means a great, great deal. I think I started then in the eighth and eight, 28th, and I've been since 26th and every year it's getting larger and larger. I don't remember who told me. I think the mayor had been the chief in the fat department. He told me that every year it gets worse and worse. He said, you know, two thousand five hundred people. I don't know about that, but I know you can walk back there. And on the way that we dismissed to go home, they had to cut the music off. So I suggest thank y'all from the bottom of my heart. This is what y'all do for me.
Thank you, Ms. Flash. What you do proud of you. Awesome.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry. I have them. I have them.
Be.
Oh, yeah. The TBA bill for July, one million, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, two hundred and forty-one dollars, seventeen cents. Beginning August 1st, an average resident equity bill decreased approximately zero, seven, one, seven, nine, six, five percent due to the TBA theory of cost adjustment. And beginning September 1st, the propane delivery rate would increase by 10 cents for residents, the commercial delivers would be two twenty-five and two thirty-five. So basically, probably for, so if you don't have any questions, just let me know. And I wish y'all would pick up some of these flyers and fill them out and get them back to me.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, all the time. No report. Okay. Now we move to, uh, departmental reports. Um, departmental reports, Simon.
Uh, Mindville meetup is coming up August the 23rd and 4th. Great event. Everyone in the community is invited to come out for that drone event in Mindville. Uh, so the date for September 27th for the unveiling of the Tina's segment.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Park. All right. Fire Department EMS. And it is good to see, I mean, uh, this has arrived after a couple of rough months. We went to the, we had, uh, we saw it open at the ambulance authority, uh, Chris was there smiling, he was there. He said, yeah, it's a good thing. So yeah, Joe, what do I have?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank everyone on the board. Uh, we worked hard on this, a lot of conversations. And, uh, we started this service here in Brownsville, uh, the ambulance service of Lexington, and it's been working smoothly so far from our side. Our guys are excited about what they're going to get to do in the future, bringing EMS into the fire service. And, uh, I'll turn it over to the operations manager of the EMS service, James Walker. He has an introduction and he can tell you a little bit more what's going on there.
So I wanted to thank all the department heads and not only the elected officials too, but, uh, Michael and the ambulance service of Lexington and my boss Glenn for giving me the opportunity to be the operations manager where y'all feel safe because there's a familiar face that is local that you can trust. And speaking of trusting, that last piece of our puzzle, he went through orientation Thursday. He just retired from Haywood County Ambulance Service where he's taking care of not only city of Brownsville residents, but Haywood County residents. And I know y'all have had two good conversations with him lately. But, uh, he has decided to come on board. I think I was twisting his arm and Chief Sanders was jumping on his back to try to get him over here. But he's got 30 years in experience serving, serving the citizens of Brownsville and Haywood County, and we're glad to have. So, uh, so he's the last piece of the puzzle. And go ahead.
I, I always tell people, you know, I, I literally have never lived much more than a mile from where I was born, you know? And I turned 51 a few days ago. So I, I know this community and, um, I've seen EMS since I was right out of high school and, uh, this is the right move. Absolutely. Uh, you know it when you said, and this was an obvious, uh, there's work to be done in this community and healthcare. That's exciting stuff you are up for. So, um, the same goes for the ambulance service. So all of our public safety, um, entities that are represented in. Uh, all of our public safety um entities that are represented in the city and the county. They all have room to grow. And change is a good thing and. I'm exactly where I need to be, excited to be here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just to, just to give you some numbers on week one of while we were in business from August first till August the seventh. We made, we, so far we've made a total of eighty-five calls. We've had eleven no transports, seventy-four transports that we've made. Fourteen transfers from the hospital, not, or excuse me. Fourteen transfers and nine discharges from the hospital, fifteen outpatient appointments, which includes your dialysis appointments. And giving people where they need to go because they're city of Brownsville residents that require that care. Uh, thirty-six nine-one-one calls. Uh, twenty-eight of those were brought to Haywood Community Hospital with an average percentage rate of bringing to the hospital at seventy-eight percent. So from what my boss told me and Michael can add to this, I think. Dr. Braden's numbers, anything over seventy is a good number for the hospital. So we're trying to make sure that. The hospital, because they have invested in the community as well, taken care of too, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Thank you, very much for your service. All right, let's take care of it. Um. That takes all the departmental reports. It's time to like entertain more for which are, where you want.
So, sir.
Second, remember we all have papers, say hi.
Hi.